Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the June 27, 2011 City of Thousand Oaks Planning Commission. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Secretary please call role?
Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Price?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Turpelle?
Here.
Chair Fisher?
Here. Item number four, public comments. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on issues that are within the commission's purview and not on the agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. I don't see any--
We have one.
I have one? Which one is it? Okay, we have one speaker card. Mario Diaz. Mr. Diaz, please state your name, city of residence, and you have five minutes.
My name is Mario Diaz. I'm a citizen of Thousand Oaks, and I wanted to come by today to thank the commissioners, to thank them on behalf of many mansions. I happen to be the chairperson of the board, and last week, we got the last piece of financing that will allow us to build Hillcrest, the project on Hillcrest Boulevard. What we're-- on Hillcrest Drive, excuse me. What we've done is, we started five years ago when we came to this board, and the board gave us permission to go ahead with the project, and here we are, five years later, and we finally have gotten the final piece of the funding. And I wanted to come and specifically thank the Planning Commission for all of their help along the way. So, good job, folks. Thank you.
Any questions of the Speaker? No?
I just wanted to say, good project.
Thank you for coming down. Okay, no other public comments? Mr. Towne, written comments, announcements, continuances?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Will the Secretary please call case 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case Appeal of PPD 2009 70423. Applicant and appellant Leonard and Lori Sanders request to appeal a staff decision that denied the retention of two storage containers in the rear yard of an existing single-family dwelling.
Mr. Chang, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Fisher, and members of the commission, and for your consideration tonight, if you can turn your attention to the screen in front of you. And for your attention, consideration tonight, appeal of precise plan of design application has been filed, and the request is to appeal the administrative decision which denied the request to allow the retention of two storage containers in the rear yard area of the subject property, which is 1374 Equestrian Avenue. And staff would like to provide some background information to the appeal applications. Back in August 2009, city staff received a complaint regarding the two storage containers in the rear yard area, and city's co-compliance staff went out for site inspection, as well as research on the possible violations. Afterwards, municipal co-violation notice was issued. In September of that year, 2009, city staff sent a letter to the property owner to respond to the written request by the property owner regarding the permit procedures. In that letter, which is in your staff report under attachment number three, explaining the permit procedure, as well as the mention and explaining architectural design criteria for any detached structures. And in November 2009, property owners submitted precise plan, which is PPD application, seeking to retain the two storage containers in the backyard. And in March, March 8 of this year, after extensive research, as well as careful review by staff member, the request was denied by the community development department. And March of 21st of this year, applicant filed the appeal application, which is to appeal the staff decision denying the case. The request is to ask for the planning commission members to reverse staff's decision, which is to approve the PPD application and to retain these two storage containers. And this is an aerial photo of the subject location, which is only by red color, and staff shall, would like to make notice of that aerial photos. This photo was taken in 2007, so storage containers weren't in that picture, so just for commissioners' reference. And currently, the storage containers are located to the upper right-hand corner to the lot, which is in your pictures, maybe upper right-hand corner. And this is a picture taken from Equestrian Avenue, standing right in front of the house, looking at the house. And this is a different perspective standing at the intersection of Equestrian and Brightcliff, looking at the house, as well as the side property line adjacent to Brightcliff. And this is a close-up look of the two storage containers. Each storage container is about eight feet wide by forty feet deep, so therefore it's 320 square feet, and approximate height of each container is about eight feet tall. So therefore, there are two containers out there, and each one is about 320 square feet. And for the lot size, for this particular location, the lot size is about .51 acres. Currently, house is about 2,720 square feet, including approximately 700 square feet attached garage space. And as staff mentioned it before, that the container itself is 320 square feet, and they have two containers, which is total of 640 square feet. And the location of the storage container is located in the rear, and the setback for the storage container is about 20 feet and 10 inches to the rear property line. And the right side property line, which is if you're standing in front of the house, that's how staff's mentioned about right side is basically is about 122 feet to the right side, which is to Brightcliff, to the street side. And left side is 19 feet, three inches, which is about 19 feet and three inches to the property to the left, if you're standing in front of the house, looking at the lot. Here are the applicable co-section that staff mentioned in the staff report, and there are additional co-sections in the staff report that staff didn't address here. But in summary, section 9-4.202 defines the structures, and 1802 talks about the requirement for a precise plan of design application, which is required for any detached accessory structures over 120 square feet. And 1803, 8-10, is, there's exemption in the PPD, in the municipal code, which if the detached or prefabricated is, if it's less than 100 square feet, the structure itself is exempt from the PPD requirement. And the other applicable co-section, which is the precise plan of design criteria, which is staff use to evaluate this project. The appellant raised three appealing, three points in their appeal. Number one is, the storage containers are not subject to city's design standards, and the containers are not in public views. And staff lists couple of co, applicable co-section in the staff report, and after staff's research, as well looking at the co-section, it is staff's determination that the storage containers did require go-to precise plan of design application process. As part of the design process, staff will look at whether the structures comply with the PPD design criteria. In this case, the structure itself does not comply with the PPD criteria. And the other thing about the view shed, staff, they went out there to a site inspection, and staff did agree with the appellant that storage contain, container itself are not visible from public street. And the second point is regarding, appellant raised that the approval of this project does not grant a special privilege because there are other storage containers out there in the cities. And appellant submit photos as part of the staff report, alleged those containers are approved by default. Staff had some research regarding those containers, and those containers are not approved by the city. And because they don't have, what staff's looking at is, for containers, they do have to meet the design criteria, and because nobody complained, doesn't mean those containers are legal. And as part of the staff report, staff attach, attachment, which talks about city council's policy regarding co-enforcement policy, staff doesn't have authority to perform proactive enforcement, therefore going out there looking for municipal co-violations. Number three, denial of this request would deny the owner the reasonable daily use of the property. It is staff's position that the appellant has other options, including building a structure that comply with the design criteria, as well as utilize off-site storage, or even utilize part of their 700 square feet attached garage space for storage purposes. Therefore, staff does believe that appellant do have other options to storage equipments. For staff's recommendation, staff is recommending the planning commission to deny the appeal, thereby upholding the decision by the community development departments. And if commissions decide there's a merit to approve the case, specific findings will need to generate by the commissioners, and if commissioners need to impose additional conditions regarding the approval, and such condition will need to generate by the commission members as well. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff's really any question?
Questions of staff? Nothing down here? Okay. Commissioner Turpelle?
And the, and I'm sorry, was Mr.?
Chang? Yes.
Okay. The, do we have, and I looked, and I actually should have called earlier to find this out, but do we know how long that the, the storage units have been on the property?
The notice, the complaint was received by the city back in August of 2009, and I guess the applicant, the appellant can provide better information, maybe it's been there longer than that, so maybe the appellant can provide better--
That's fair. That's fair. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, let's go to the applicant, Ms. Lori Sanders. Ms. Sanders, please state your name and city for the record, and you will have 15 minutes.
My name is Sanders, and I live in Thousand Oaks, and I was advised that my presentation did go a little longer, and that I should, if I may have just a little bit of time, because I have quite a few pictures, I'd only go about three minutes over, so I just wanted to maybe apologize beforehand, if that would be okay with you.
Is that okay with the commissioners?
Thank you. I think they're pictures that are important. Okay. Let me just put this out here. Okay. Good evening, commissioners, chairs, and others present here tonight. My name is Lori Sanders, and our property address is 1374 Equestrian Avenue. The site location is R.O. Zoned Rural Estate Park Ranch, a subdivision of Old Rancho El Cano. It is a mini ranch property zone for horses, small farm animals, and agricultural use. The property was bought for the above purposes, to store recreational vehicles and trailers, its seclusion, privacy from neighbors, and the size of its lot, and was conducive and facilitative to our private and self-sufficient lifestyle living off of our property. The first picture that I'm putting down here, front of our property faces the back of the Ralph Shopping Center, so we have no neighbors. We have a 12--
Ms. Sanders, can you stand in front of the microphone, or can we give her a portable microphone?
Thank you so much. The front of our property faces the back of the Jan's Mall. It's a 12-foot slumpstone wall that was put in, so we only have one-way traffic on our street there. Mr. Chang showed you the other picture of our, our property, which was this one here already. From the side of Brightcliff, there is, there is no visibility to the containers that are in the far corner. This is the front part of the property here, where the fence is, and the containers sit way in the back. So there is absolutely no visibility to the containers. The only ones that can see them are ourselves and the two horses behind us, and if they have eyes in the rear end, they would be the only ones that would be able to see them. Our presence here tonight is to seek approval of those draft conditions in the city staff report, attachment eight, that would permit the retention of our utility containers, which are appropriate and necessary to the land's use and zoning, and to request a letter from the City of Thousand Oaks expunging the MCV previously issued 2009 during, due to the filing of the PPD application granted in '09. The staff stated that the utility containers are considered detached structures, and retention would require the filing of a PPD. We have complied with that. Application is based on design, color, building materials, and compatibilities. In reference to the staff's comments regarding any architectural discrepancies, this applicant will provide visual evidence exhibiting that staff could not have sincerely utilized careful consideration as it pertains to the applicable design elements, as it did say in its denial. Because those denials are not made within the context of that which is inherently apparent and obvious to all of us landowners in the neighborhood, how we use our properties and the corresponding appearance we all understand, accept, and that comes with ranch and agricultural activities reserved for rear acreages. To the best of our collective knowledge, there are no complaints amongst us of us as neighbors. Owning property in the neighborhood comes with all of us looking at one another's barns, metal horse sheds, corrals, metal awnings, goat pens, chicken coops, animal sheds, utility sheds, baling wire, hay and feed, large 35-40-foot RV motor homes, trailers, huge boats, vehicle utility covers of every length wafting in the wind. It comes with the territory when living, leaving in this type of zoning, and our containers are applicable and acceptable to our property use in the surrounding neighborhood. The horses, the goats, the chickens, the bunnies, the vegetables have no concept of the architectural elements. Prior to this evening and speaking mostly to our neighbors about the issue bringing us here tonight, they are perplexed as to why we are being burdened with this process. Our containers don't bother them, we have their approval to retain them, no one can see them except for our family and the farm animals behind us. For example, staff concluded that our utility containers, which no one can see, would not be consistent with the design elements for a particular area. That would be true if we were in Bel Air, however, we're in Old Cano Ranch property, or would not be compatible with surrounding structures in our existing neighborhood. Let me show these pictures here. This is the actual house that sits right behind our containers. This is an aluminum, metal shed, roof, barn for the horses. This is within our context of architectural design. Our next-door neighbor, also, this sits in the front of Equestrian, which is an animal shade aluminum, all visible. Our other neighbor around the corner, this is a shed here, play equipment, and another container down here. This is right in our neighborhood as you come in. This is right where the Jan's riding area is. The turquoise barn is completely aluminum with an aluminum top. This is another one of our neighbors here, pretty corner to us, albeit that they do have a little pitch, it is a little boxy, it is a storage container, but I'm confused and perplexed about why we have architectural issues. I brought a sample here to show you of architectural matters, and that has to do with these here. This is a siding, this is a house, this is a container, and I bet you can't tell me what this is. So the sidings themselves have the detail and the integrity on the sides of the containers that any house does. And even our next-door neighbor has the same baton board shown on the front of their house that the containers do. Excuse me for just a moment, please. The design is compatible construction for ranch utility and agricultural purposes. The pattern of the siding is similar to that found on homes both within and outside our neighborhood that maintain a baton board siding theme. The same pattern can be seen on the adjacent home, as well as that found on approved prefabricated metal barn structures exempted under section 9.4, 1803. That rusted metal barn that you saw there is something that is approved under that section, but because of its size, there's no problem with it, albeit that they deteriorate in rust. Those originally came from J.C. Plumbing and Electrical Supplies off Thousand Oaks Boulevard over 30 years ago, and they have now replaced those with their own utility containers. There is no mechanical equipment, including Vansor exhaust, the heavy-duty steel designed to maintain the structure integrity is needed for heavy-duty equipment moved in and out of the containers. There is no deleterious or adverse effect on surrounding properties or upon the peace, health, safety, and economic welfare of the neighbors or the property owner. These samples of doors, fences, containers, walls, they show depth, dimension, detail, and integrity in a manner that that report did not. The placement concerns, the utility trailers occupy 2% of the parcel. There exists no engineering, elevation, or view obstruction, or any other kind of danger or safety hazards. The color is compatible to the existing dwelling, freshly painted in a combination of Alaskan white and Navajo white, which is permitted within the earth and hue color. Walls are absent of any bright, shiny, or non-textured metal surface. I took all of this information directly from the information that Mr. Chang gave us to say that these things that you couldn't have, and these are things that we don't have. The dwelling as the containers are both monochromatic and in theme, and are therefore compatible with the natural setting of our property, the environment, the neighborhood, and the community. Absence of root pitch is intentional in order to keep storage low in profile with no apparent visibility over fence line. Their height profile is requested to remain the same in order to maintain no visual obtrusions being seen from our rear yard, and the exception of our fifth-wheel travel trailer. Some of the newer containers, though, do have a very small pitched roof, and I'll show you what's happening right now in terms of the culture. New containers are coming out now like this with a tiny, tiny pitch. This is also around the corner in Thousand Oaks. Before you even enter our neighborhood, there are about four containers like this. From what I understand also is that, let me just move on here. Applicant's response to the special privilege was that, I'm so sorry, I'm a little nervous here, staff determinations resulting in their denials are noted in that we are being given special privileges. Based on assumptions as homeowners that we have special privileges and alternatives which we don't have, and suggestions are absurd in light of the contrary evidence we see in the surrounding community. Failing both to respond to and to provide our requested documentation that supports if any valid research was really or objectively conducted by staff. Staff said it utilized this research as a basis for their denial on us, so limited by their opinion and a quick one-two stroke on a computer keyboard, their research reflected nothing, nada, zip, nothing, was found in the database. And I say this, without sarcasm, I truly want to say, "Buh," because of course, there's no legitimate channel to process these requests. Blatantly ignoring the architectural issues that are already inherently present and part of the overall context and culture of the property's intended land use and its place among like surrounding properties that share the same interests as we do, through quick observation, one can see visually there would be no granting of special privilege to us or any issue of architectural incompatibility adjacent to the homeowners. Parroting that staff has historically maintained strict adherence to city guidelines could potentially ruffle everyone's feather. I would like to say gracefully and to point out in these pictures that is an untruth expressed through letters and phone calls that we get, that, you know, you, you, you can't do this. So for 47 years, there's a huge amount of historical timeline to deliberate whether it's time to address our community's needs. We pass by dozens of these containers each day on our way about town, barely registering them in our conscious awareness. I've converted the lack of unconscious awareness to some physical evidence that can be measured, counted, listed, and witnessed, and this is how I did my research. Over a thousand containers. The special privilege denial clause should never be utilized against or recklessly endowed upon anyone in our community, as has happened to our family. The economic trends make us realize through our collective experiences that these structures are now an integral, necessary part of our daily living, providing all of us with the immediacy of goods, services, records, athletic equipment, supplies, feed, agricultural, farming implements, construction tools, sensitive materials, and equipment. Take any one of these containers and temporary trails away, and will swiftly discover the disorder and economic hardship that will immediately ensue for our fire department, where they're located, school board buildings, our local schools, churches, all of our ball fields, our parks, our city agencies, corporate and retail businesses, Town Thousand Oaks Boulevard, philanthropic clubs, Elks Club-- philanthropic clubs, Elks Club, nonprofit organizations, behind our supermarkets, our shopping centers, Equestrian Riding areas, 4-H clubs, rural acreages, and, yes, city yard. We are doing what we have to do to say and comply to considering it a structure. But if it is considered a structure, then why are there not 1,000 other PPDs on file? Why are there not other permits on file? City yard. Church facing residential. Polina School facing residential. Polina School, open trash. Waverly School with vents. Waverly School with vents. Avenue de Los Arboles Fire Station, they do not have a pitched roof on their containers. Alex Fiori Park. More of the park. Old Caneo Park. Two 40-foots, two 20s. Boys and Girls Club. Architecturally compliant, blue, in the middle of our neighborhoods. Doesn't make sense. Our loving Elks Club, where we probably store all of our badges, our Badgeroo equipment and for our parades, this is where we go when we get our tires filled, and it's right on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. But I'm not allowed to have two containers that can't be seen in our backyard. This is an encroachment even on the street. Here we have another one. We're doing -- how can our city even function if you were to take all of these away? Because you would also feel the bottom line and the impact fiscally on sales tax, because excuse my language, once these people are pissed off and perturbed, that they have to do something to remove their containers like we're being asked to do, it's going to have a fiscal effect on a lot of people. These are all the ones that are here in the local neighborhood. I'm sorry, and I apologize. Staff's Attachment 4, 5, and 6 help us further to reflect that the promotion of trade and commerce is to ensure a continued managed growth in accordance with the adopted general plan and to retain the well-being of its economy and people without depriving a property owning owner of any authorized uses of the property. The development and architectural designs of buildings, all buildings and structures in the city, not just the Sanders property, shall comply with the architectural design guidelines adopted by the resolution of the city council, and it to be due to the beneficial effect on the well-being and general economic welfare of its inhabitants. There is not a single permit, zone clearance, or PPD application for the addition of any of these accessory hybrid structures on file within our City of Thousand Oaks, and that's why no response to the research requests that we made were able to be made possible. Nor has the city ever been able to provide any documentation to us over the last seven years showing how any plan, resolution, or municipal or building code exempts the city, its municipal stakeholders, businesses, churches, parks, et cetera, from complying with the filing, the paperwork for the structures erected or placed upon these grounds. Do we see the conundrum? We have a bifurcated issue here. The first one has to do with developing a means for the application, and the second has to do with these design elements. I have one paragraph, may I finish reading it? Neither the city nor the county should ever put itself above its own codes or its general plans or above the interests of the people, organization, and businesses that they serve, else lose all credibility as a governing authority. It must not provide itself a channel of exemption that is not afforded to others, or be one that systematically blocks a property owner the authorized use of his or her property without threat or economic burden by forcing an owner to build or to remove one's personal goods from their property and relocate it to off-site storage. We are not in a place to be able to relocate. We are not in a place to be able to build, and we economically cannot afford this. We have been burglarized three times off-site, and it seems absolutely senseless that with the kind of property that we have that we're being requested to move this. Thank you so very much for your time, and I apologize for any of my emotionality right now. It's a very passionate issue for our family. Thank you.
Questions of the applicant? Commissioner Reynolds.
Hi. Hi. Would you do me a favor and put back the picture that shows your fence on the side yard on Briar Cliff? The one that shows a wood fence, and it stepped down.
Come down Briar Cliff. Please you come down.
Can you grab the microphone again?
I feel sorry.
What I'm curious about is in your statement for your appeal, you wrote that you have an eight-foot-high fence. Is it -- is this fence to the ground, or is it on top of something? Show me where it's -- is it eight foot at the highest end?
No, our fences are not eight feet high.
Well, you wrote that on page 48 in your statement, and that's why I'm curious.
No, the property is a flat property that slopes down flat. So even though the fences are four, four-and-a-half foot high in the front, you still can't see the containers because they're so far at the back of the property.
Right, but in this one, the last page of your letter, it says you have eight foot high and under fence line, no visibility above fence line. That's why I thought maybe you had an eight foot...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm meaning that they're eight foot high and under fence line.
Okay, so your fence is not eight feet then?
No.
That's what I was concerned about, because fences can only be six feet.
No.
And -- but because the containers are so far away from the fence, you do not see that height at all?
No.
Okay, great.
The fences are four, four-and-a-half feet high.
Thank you. That really answers my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Ferris.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just had a few questions. I just wanted to -- from your...
I'm scared, I apologize.
Please, please don't be. I know this could be kind of an intimidating chamber here, but don't be intimidated by it. I just had a few questions on it. I just want to get an understanding of the timeline on this. So you received a complaint from the -- they notified you of a complaint back in 2009, is that right?
We know when the complaint happened. It was just on the delivery.
Okay. And then, when you found out about it, they said you have to file a PPD permit to take care of it?
Yep.
And so you did, timely, right?
Yep, and we've spent $1,600 to be here today to have this adventure.
And then, and it took quite a while for the city to come back to you with the decision?
Yes, over a year and a half.
Yeah. Okay, and then after you received the notification that you filed the appeal here?
Yeah, because we thought the issue was pretty moot.
Okay.
There was no reason, there was no objection, there's no true architectural issues. We have a beautiful home. We have a beautiful backyard. We have a beautiful container. We're developing beautiful patio areas around it. The areas around us have aluminum foil and metal and doggy butts and horse butts and chickens and chicken coops. So it just is so incongruent with what we're being told about architectural aesthetics and compliance when we're right there doing what we need to do and being denied this.
And I'll ask staff this in a minute, but did you get like a letter? Or first of all, you put this -- they had to have the sign out in front, right?
We have it signed out twice, no oppositions.
You still have the sign out in front. But did you receive a letter saying, hey, there's gonna -- there's this -- I'm trying to get -- I don't know if you get the letter, but I'm assuming neighbors get a letter...
They all got letters.
In a radius that says this is coming up.
Twice they got letters.
Okay. Those are things I want to know.
Twice it's been posted, no oppositions. Twice they've gotten letters, no oppositions. And the week before coming here today, we submitted about eight to 10, or maybe 14 approvals from our neighbors supporting and encouraging us to go forward to do this. We all benefit from this.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Price.
Yes, Ms. Sanders. I think there were 13 of those cards in support of the appeal. I'm just curious whether you have the neighbors on both Briar Cliff and the one next to you?
Yes.
Whether you have the support from each of them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, our street goes Equestrian, Equestrian, Briar Cliff, and Montgomery, so we have them around the corner even.
Commissioner Tappel.
I think I'll ask you this time, and don't worry, I'm scared too, okay? And I know where your streets go because it took me 30 minutes to get out of there once I got in.
Thank you.
But the -- I'm going to ask you the question because you were the right person to ask. How long have you had those containers there to begin with?
We've had actually those specific containers there since August, and those containers were put there in lieu of when you saw in the original aerial, there were older rusty containers, goat pens, and everything else. So we cleaned up the entire yard and pushed everything into the two containers, so the entire property is flat and can be, what's the word, replowed for our regular vegetation, and we removed the goat pen and...
Okay, that's fine. And Commissioner Ferris asked all the other questions I needed to have answered, so.
Commissioner Price?
I think I missed that. They went in there when? You said August, you didn't say what year.
2009.
Okay.
Any additional questions of the speaker? Thank you, Ms. Sanders. We'll be back to you shortly.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to public comment. I've got three cards. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. First speaker is Shirley McLaughlin. Ms. McLaughlin, please come to the podium, state your name and city of residence for the record.
I'm sorry, my housekeeping. Oh, this is your microphone. You guys are going to get the big hook on me, I know.
Good evening. My name is Shirley McLaughlin, and I live on Montgomery Road, Thousand Oaks. Thank you for listening to my comment tonight. It's very simple. I'm in favor of the city code being enforced, and I would like for you to deny the appeal. And that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Any questions of the speaker? Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Next speaker, Martin McLaughlin.
Oh, I'll ask him.
Good evening. My name is Martin McLaughlin. I reside on Montgomery Road. I'm in favor of the staff decision to deny the appeal and uphold the city code.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Good evening. Can you tell me, do you live directly behind this house?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ron Kaufman. I've been a resident in the Caneo for over 30 years. I am in total support of any person's retention of their residential, rural, commercial, industrial, or retail usage of storage containers in context of the environment and situations as Ms. Sanders has expressed. They are economic essentials now to our businesses where they are in public view from Westlake Village through Thousand Oaks and all the way to Newbury Park. Business owners struggling with rising overhead and minimal profit margins require stock on hand and stories that can be immediately accessed, controlled, and monitored without further facilities cost. Remove their containers, and you will see economic impact on business bottom lines and ultimately decreasing sales tax revenue to the city. Ironically, it would be the removal of any containers within our city limits that will have a detrimental economic effect on us collectively and business owners as customers and as consumers, as property owners, taxpayers, and governing agencies. With the right attitude and procedures, they can be seen as solutions and not concerns that just keep to -- excuse me, that we just keep ignoring. Secondly, residential pods, port of storage, cargo trailers, and utility bins are now essential for all families struggling economically, with one or both adults being unemployed and/or adult children and grandchildren returning home in addition to taking in aging, disabled, and retired parents. Reducing living costs and increasing space efficiency is essential to keeping people and their families in their homes. If more homes fall into foreclosure, more homes become empty and abandoned, within the city endures increased costs, lost tax revenue, and the neighborhoods subsequently suffers too from such a loss. I believe Mr. Jeff Ware of Code Compliance expressed in 2008, 2009, an article in the Acorn newspaper, that number-one focus for them should be the attention needed regarding abandoned homes and public safety, not issues pertinent to containers. Third, in terms of one's residential environment and aesthetics relative to non-visual or partly visual containers, it seems immaterial to address design issues and effects on the environment in terms of storage containers when we observe huge, humongous RVs, motorhomes, trailers, boats, which are obviously larger than any container, taller and more overpowering in size as compared to the profile of any container. These huge vehicles are parked in driveways, side yards, backyards, but people choose to live where they live and how they want to live and what they are willing to work, to look, and observe in particular neighborhoods. When we're losing some of our simplest rights to keep on our property, our all or our personal properties, equipment, goods, and resources, something needs to shift. I'd like to show you a few pictures that I have very quickly, if I may, some of the ones that I've observed in the neighborhood. I don't know what this is, but it's pretty huge. They're larger than any container I've ever seen. Here's a motorhome sitting in a driveway that overpowers any container I've ever seen in size and dimension. Here's one that they just want to cover it up. Look how much it's standing over top of the fencing. These are things in our neighborhood that we look at that we don't mind, but we can Here's one. Guy likes the blue one. He likes the blue tarps because they're inexpensive to cover. Here's a boat. I think it's probably a sea boat. Look at the mass on that thing, overpowering the fence line. And the last one? This guy, I don't know what he knows if he knows what he's doing. He's got motorhomes, trailers, all kinds. He looks like he's some kind of contractor, and he's got them all over his front yard. This is what we look at in our neighborhoods, but we don't oppose because that's where we choose to live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Questions of the speaker? No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to staff.
Staff would just like to address a couple issues raised by the appellant. And first was regarding the design criteria. Even though the storage containers are not visible from the street, staff, the city staff does not have the authority to waive the requirement because it's not visible. And there's nothing in the municipal code give the staff authority to waive the requirement or arbitrarily to apply to this case but not apply to the other case. So staff, city staff does not have the authority to arbitrarily waive the standard because it's not visible. And the second was regarding the design. What staff's looking at the containers tried to compare with the existing house, as well as surrounding approved detached buildings or house in roof pitch, color materials, exterior materials, and also material using, which is visible siding, but the cargo container is metal surface, which they're not compatible. So what staff's looking at is the existing, as well as Jason Homes or other approved detached buildings. Staff doesn't look at the unapproved or unpermitted building as a justification to approve something. And regarding the RV trailers, city council updated their RV requirement back in 2005. So RV could be parked in front of a city-approved driveway if it's less than 30 days. And also, the RV could park right next to the sideline as long as they maintain a three-feet setback. So there is some requirement in the RV code that does allow RV motorhomes, watercraft to be parked or at certain location of the property. And this concludes staff's comments.
Questions of staff. Commissioner Reynolds.
Good evening, Mr. Chang. Can you tell... Good evening, Mr. Chang. Can you tell me, are storage units on commercial properties or PL properties treated any differently than storage units on residential property?
For commercial properties, for example, recycling centers, there's some state regulation that city would need to look at it when city approve or review the applications. So there could be different criterias looking at, applied to commercial as well industrial projects. And for example, industrial project, they may have more like a boxy type of buildings. And depends on what location they put it. It is possible that some storage containers are allowed in industrial or commercial projects, but staff would like to say most of those are not permitted.
Okay, the same as at schools or the parks?
Staff has done some research. Staff cannot find any approval regarding those.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Ferris?
This is just a follow-up of a question I asked the applicant, but when the PPD was filed and the sign was placed out in front, the neighbors within a specific radius received the letter stating that this was an application that was currently on file and requesting input, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And based on the staff report, it says that there was no input provided at that point in time?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, just for the record, we have twelve statement cards in favor of the applicant. So now we will go back to the applicant. Ms. Sanders, you have a five-minute rebuttal.
Going back in terms of what Mr. Chang just said, there is nothing anywhere on file for any container in any place. We are the poster children for this issue to probably start some type of registration process at least for containers. In addition, the containers are also considered portable and they're temporary utility equipment structures. In code Section 8, 1064 amendments, Appendix Chapter 1, Section 105 permits, said that the building official by administrative order may waive permit requirement for minor structures or portions there are which are not inimical to public health, safety, or because of their temporary nature. Our containers are temporary. When we choose to leave our property, we can leave with them. We don't choose to want to build a barn to put there. If we want to sell the property and somebody can put a swimming pool in, that's fine. And if we choose to pack everything up the way it is, we'll take it that way. It's not okay for anyone, though, to have, we get from the city that this is what we're told. It's not okay for anyone to have them, the containers, but it's okay if nobody complains. But if someone complains, then it's not okay. That's what we've been listening to for seven years. This type of response is nonsense, irresponsible, unprofessional, unacceptable, and ignorant. And we sincerely and productively and are cooperatively asking for your assistance in making the changes that are necessary in this community. It's a simple process. It's a registration process. It's a simple permit process based upon everyone's merit. And I would just say that I truly pray that you will vote, you will not vote in opposition for us today for fear that you may be setting a precedent. We hope that you will refer to and reflect upon what the staff notes in its memorandum report was and said that should others be interested in doing what we have been doing here tonight, they must enter their own legitimate process, pay the respective fees, and their outcome should be based on the merit of their project, their needs, their site location, their individual impact factors specific to the approval, their plans and projects. But we still need to address the other nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine containers that are in this community, not just our two, please.
Questions to the applicant? No questions. Yes, Commissioner Terrell?
Just, Ms. Sanders, the
Yes, sir.
There was a, an issue that if the commission did go through and, I get mixed up, it's like a double negative, but approve the appeal. The, there were, staff said that there were some items in Attachment 8 that would need to be addressed.
Yes, sir.
Did you have any problems with any of those in there?
No, sir. As long as, the only one condition that we had is we didn't understand, I think it was number five, I think it said something about construction between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. I didn't understand how that was applicable. There's nothing to construct, direct, fix, engineer, anything other than to bless it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Towne, did you have anything?
Yes, if I could, just to augment it, and perhaps you could just stay there for a moment, Ms. Sanders, just talking about Mr. Chang's comments in response to some of your comments. I think it's important to recognize that staff in this role is obligated to look at the containers in light of the city's architectural standards. It's what staff does, is what we're obligated to do. Historically, such containers have not been seen as being compatible with the city's architectural standards. That's why we don't have any approvals on file. In talking to Code Compliance, there are several cases, more or less a year, where such containers are removed. Having said all that, the reason that we're here is obviously this is an appeal. The planning commission has broader authority, broader powers than staff. The commission, should it choose, may consider to approve this PPD, and that stands for precise planning design. That is the appropriate and legitimate process for someone such as yourself to go through to legitimize these containers. In doing so, and I think it ties in with a comment that you just mentioned, it's important, I think, for the commission to look at this property very carefully and identify in its findings what's unique about the property, what separates it from the other nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine that you mentioned. Because not all properties are created equal, and that's part of the judgment, part of the deliberation that is before the commission this evening. So having said that, I'd be happy to provide any more background.
Any other questions to the applicant? No. Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
Thank you so very much.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Open for commission discussion and/or motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
I'd like to start by asking Mr. Towne then. So therefore, if we approve the appeal with one of the circumstances that these units cannot be seen because of the fence, does it therefore give anybody with containers that cannot be seen the right to have them on their property?
Short answer is no. Any other owner of a storage container would need to follow a similar precise planning design process. We're not changing the municipal code tonight. We're looking at a particular case and comparing it to city standards. So any other person would need to go through the same process. Again, what you would need to do is to look at this property and ask yourself, what is unique, if anything, about it?
Well, then I'd rather hear from the rest of the commissioners if they think that this is a unique piece of property.
Commissioner Price?
Yes. I want to thank the appellant for, obviously, a very thorough and thoughtful presentation there. I do want to say this, that it's important that the city have these codes and these standards, because otherwise, we would see these Conex boxes or storage containers, whatever you want to call them, there would be a proliferation of them if there isn't already. I know that they do exist in most schools. We see them as well. But I want to make sure that we don't start seeing them popping up in every neighborhood. I think that this location is somewhat unique. This property is unique in that I visited the site and I looked long and hard to see if I couldn't find them. And even knowing where they were, because I have benefit of having this map and an aerial view, I knew exactly where they were, but I was not able to see them from either street. What does concern me is that they might be visible to a neighbor. And in that case, I think that we need to be very cautious if we were to grant the appeal by placing some conditions that would remove their visibility. And that could be done either with constructing something that would eliminate those containers from the view of that neighbor or either neighbor, or planting something that would perhaps on a trellis or something that would grow to a height of eight or more feet and be certainly less cumbersome and less expensive than removing them and starting over. So I guess I would say that, given the fact that these are not visible from the street, they are not, I don't think, what the city is seeking to prevent. Although I do have to go back and say that I understand that there has to be a process that people need to go through to apply, to have these things in their yards. And I want to make sure that, and I'm not quite sure how to craft it, but I want to make sure that in doing this, we're not, and I know that we can't, but I don't even want to come close to opening up Pandora's Box and being the people who are responsible for the proliferation of these. So those are my comments at this point.
Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, as Mr. Towne had mentioned, we're in a position, we have greater authority than staff does on evaluating the particular property. And we have a number of things sort of in front of us at how it even got to this point. One of them is that there was a resolution city council put forward in 2003 that said things like this are going to be triggered by complaint. It was a decision city council made, and we have one of two choices. We could either allow potential violations to be brought to the city's attention by complaints, or we could have the city proactively go out and try and find all the complaints in people's yards to make sure that they all comply with code. And I'm not sure if that's the city we really want to live in. So I can't argue with the city council's decision to say this gets triggered by complaint. So it was brought to our attention. In doing that, city informed the appellant that they need to put forward an application. They did so. And it took sixteen months to come up with a denial, even though there was no input provided by any of the people who had received notification that there was going to be a proposal to keep these on, a permit for the property. So I'm concerned that, I mean, in some way, the city was doing its job. It was looking at the application. It was saying, do we believe in our judgment and history, does this meet with the city's guidelines? They came down saying no. But I've, in hearing the testimony from the appellant, I can see where it can be considered to be consistent with the remaining part of the neighborhood. We did get statement cards from other members in the neighborhood that says that they are in favor of allowing a permit to do that. It's not unanimous. We had McLaughlin's here today saying they would like to see it denied. But that's why this is then a tough decision. We have to weigh all these things. I think that sometimes each of the things that we have on the books, things getting triggered by complaint, filing the PPD applications, having those notices, are all there to make sure that we have a beautiful and neighborly city to live in, but sometimes they don't always, you know, if you hit to the letter of the law on each of them, you don't hit to the right result, maybe. I do see for this property, it is unique for a couple of things. One, the sitescape, you can't see it from Briar Cliff or from Equestrian over the fence lines from the street. Two, the property itself is large enough, and these are, while they're reasonably large structures, they are somewhat temporary. You can move them in, move them out. In total, many other yards, you wouldn't be able to have the setback requirement to even move them in and out. So my hope would be it would not proliferate into all properties all over the city just because you can't get them in and out that way. You would physically have to construct something that big, and for that reason would definitely be deserving of a permit. So just kind of talking these things through, I'm more in favor of, is it granting the appeal? Is that what we would be doing? And trying to work it out to make sure that I would be able to allow for the existence of the structures.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Price and Ferris hit it right square on the head. Great observations and input. I think overall going forward, at some point, I think there needs to be a municipal code amendment to address it, because seeing some of the pictures there, it's just unsightly. So I think we should probably head down that path, but I agree with my fellow commissioners here. So would anyone care for a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Before I make my motion, I would like to ask staff if they would come up with language for screening of these from the neighbor. Oh, Mr. Norman?
Yeah, thank you. If the majority of the planning commission is looking to approve that, one thing I recommend at this point is to let staff come back with some precise findings based on the comments that have been made tonight, so that you can review those and have a vote with that in front of you. Mr. Towne may have some comments on that.
Are you asking for us to continue with this, then?
Well, there's, you could do a motion called a motion of intent. It's not been done here too often, but I would allow it where the commission hypothetically could vote in favor of the motion of intent to approve the project based on the findings made here. Staff would then prepare a resolution or precise findings, bring those back, and then on consent counter, for example, the commission could approve those findings and the resolution of approval within be adopted. That's one way to do it, rather than trying to come up with wholesale findings tonight, which is difficult to do.
Okay. That might include or might not include the draft conditions in our packet.
Let me throw out another option. If it would be permissible, could the commission take a ten-minute break to allow staff some time to come up with something? Is that enough time so we can complete this tonight and it doesn't drag out?
We could try, sure.
Staff will do their best.
That's right.
Commissioner Ferris?
One quick question. Given that, I mean, we'll come up with findings, obviously, those are things on which we would base the granting of the appeal. If we were to add additional conditions that would be over and above Attachment 8, would it be wise for us to reopen the hearing, ask for appellant's views on those? All right, thanks.
Commissioner Terrell?
Yeah, I never, in listening to the testimony tonight, I never heard anybody say that they could see the storage units. So that wasn't on my radar screen. I mean, I think, it seems to me like they're, these two things that we're talking about are mutually exclusive, the findings that we're looking for. I haven't seen this as a problem. Do you see, I'm sorry.
May I interject? Driving down Briar Cliff, if you look through the neighbor behind them, I could see buildings or something through the fence there.
But I'm
And I couldn't really tell from being in my car if I was seeing the containers or just some other outbuildings in the Sanders yard.
I was just focusing on this appeal.
Oh, okay.
This particular one, rather than trying to solve something else further down the line.
No. Well, you were saying that nobody had said that they couldn't see.
That's correct.
I thought I could see or something through the bushes. If you looked at a corner driving down the street and through, I guess, McLaughlin's fence, I don't know if I was seeing the containers, but I could see some light tan yellowish buildings or something in the backyard there. So I assumed that I could see the containers
Commissioner Price?
In the Sanders yard as I was driving down the street, so.
I was just wondering if, so as not to handcuff the staff, whether there's any benefit to attempting to come up with the conditions now as opposed to putting it off until another, a later date, and giving them ample time. Do they think that it can be done in a relatively short period of time? Okay, if so, I'm all for it.
Okay. Mr. Norman?
I'd just like to respond to something that Commissioner Reynolds said about what she saw on her visit. One thing the commission needs to be careful about is what evidence it may consider in reaching a decision. That, what you saw personally was not part of the record. The public hearing's been closed. The evidence is in. So the commission's really not allowed to consider that at this point unless the public hearing was reopened and that testimony was put on the record.
Okay. The commission will take a ten-minute break and come back. Okay, we'll reconvene the Planning Commission meeting of June 27, 2011. We're back on Case 6A. Mr. Towne, you have some proposed language for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following our draft findings for the commission's consideration, should it choose to support the proposed containers and approve the precise plan of design? First would be that the containers are not visible from adjacent public streets. Second, the area occupied by the containers is a small percentage, approximately 3% of the property's overall size, which is .51 acres. The setbacks, this is number three, exceed the standards in RO's single-family estate zone. Number four, the property size allows for adequate ingress and egress to the containers. Number five, the structures and their design to be substantially and materially compatible with surrounding properties and the intended use of, and intended uses in the RO zone. Number six, the structures would not adversely affect public safety and welfare. Number seven, with imposed conditions, comma, visual impact will be minimal to adjacent properties. And on that note, I'd like to talk about the conditions for a moment, and I'm now referring to page 69 of the commission's packet. Staff would recommend that an additional condition of approval be included, and it would read as follows. Evergreen landscaping shall be installed to screen the containers from adjacent properties, that would be to the east and to the north, subject to approval and inspection by the Community Development Department. And that's obviously to address concerns we've heard from a neighbor. Also, on the topic of conditions, staff would recommend that number five be deleted. That's the condition with regard to construction activity, which is not applicable. And on number six, and we didn't talk about this before, so it's important, I would add to the second sentence, and there's only two sentences in this condition, and it reads as follows. The maximum height of the storage containers shall be limited to eight feet, which is their current height. The storage container shall maintain a minimum six-foot separation from other structures in the dwelling, which is based on city standards and code, comma, and I would add the following language, unless otherwise approved by the building official. So, that would allow the building official, who's also deputy director in the Community Development Department, to look at this particular case and allow the containers to be kept essentially side by side and not have one of them relocated to be at least six feet apart, which is the standard separation for accessory structures. And that would be it. I would just recommend that the commission reopen the hearing to allow the appellant an opportunity to react to the modifications to the conditions that I just noted.
Okay. We'll go ahead and reopen the public hearing. Ms. Sanders, give you a chance to come up to the podium and let us know if you're okay with the added conditions.
That's a big 10 for.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a yes. Thank you, Ms. Sanders. We'll close the public hearing, go to commission comment. Motion, Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. I think that we've had a good discussion, and I thank staff for the additional conditions and the findings. So, with that, I'd like to move approval of the appeal of PPD 2009-70423 with the, I don't know if those were findings, and the conditions that staff has come up with in Attachment 8 and the additions to it. And I think that this is going to work out good. I would hope that maybe eventually there could be something else done, a municipal code change, but we can't do that tonight or even really address it. It's not on our agenda. I just hope that you, as neighbors, can work together, and you have to live next door to each other, so I hope that with the screening and the containers out of sight, that there will be an end to this.
Comments to the motion? No? Vote, please.
Motion passed 5 to 0.
There's a 10-day appeal period. Will the secretary please call Case 6B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding case appeal of RPMN 2010-70446. Applicant, Davidon Holmes. Appellant, Alex Bakchadzian. Request to appeal an administrative hearing decision that approved an additional residential single-story model for an approved residential subdivision.
Mr. Shepherd.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This application, before you deny it, is actually an appeal request. The request is to appeal an administrative hearing decision which approved an additional single-story model for residential subdivision. The subdivision, subject to this application, is actually Track 5200 out in the Dos Vientos Ranch area. This is in the southwestern portion of the Dos Vientos Ranch. The property is on the west side of Rancho Dos Vientos Drive. The main entrance to the tract is at Villa Bonita. We have an aerial photo here showing the tract area and some of the units under construction at that time when the photo was taken. On February 26, 2002, the city approved Track 5200 and RPD 2001-528 to allow the subdivision of the property and construction of 69 single-family dwellings. At that time, the owner of the property was the Operating Engineers Pension Trust Fund, one of the main developers for the Dos Vientos area. Excuse me. The, as the Operating Engineers, their practice out there was to get lots subdivided, or get these tracks subdivided, and then sell them to merchant builders. Over a period of time, it was offered to several builders, and eventually Davidon Holmes actually purchased the property to develop. And on August 6, 2007, modification, RPD minor modification, 2007-70089 was approved for the construction of dwelling units, the 69 dwelling units. What was proposed or approved were three model home designs, one single-story unit and two two-story models. The sizes of the units ranged from 4,276 square feet to 5,344 square feet. With the models, there are also three architectural styles, the Spanish, Tuscan, and Italian The developer then proceeded to develop several phases of the project, and in September 2003, excuse me, September 23, 2010, Davidon Holmes filed an additional minor modification, RPMN 2010-70446, to add a second single-story residential unit with two architectural styles, the Spanish and the Tuscan design. And this model will be 3,888 square feet. With that, they also proposed a new unit mix for the 69 units. The Plan 1, single-story, would have 16 homes. Plan 2, two-story, would have 23 homes. The Plan 3, two-story, would have 20 homes. And the Plan 4, single-story, would have 10 homes. Would be noted that six of the 10 Plan 4 units, which are the new units, will actually replace the Plan 1, single-story unit. And then to each of the Plan 4s will replace a Plan 2 and a Plan 3. During the public review period for this modification, one letter was received in opposition to the application, and two letters were received requesting an administrative hearing. On February 10, 2011, the modification was approved by the hearing officer at the administrative hearing, and on February 22, 2011, the appellant filed an appeal of the administrative hearing decision, requesting that the Planning Commission overturn the decision of the hearing officer. On March 28, 2011, it was actually a, this item was scheduled to come before the Planning Commission for administrative, or a hearing on the appeal. However, the hearing was continued to allow the appellant time to review related materials with this appeal. In compliance with the appellant's request, copies of the actual exhibits for the project, the floor plans, elevation plans, and site plans were provided for the appellant's review, and additional documents were also sent to the appellant. And this was all sent on April 5, 2011. In the appeal application, the appellant states that, for the reasons of the appeal, or grounds for the appeal, that first, that the new plan will significantly alter the community dynamics, and two, that the additional basis for the appeal would be raised after the review of the additional background information. And then at the administrative hearing, the appellant and two others had stated that the new units would have a detrimental impact on the value of their homes. After the, or as previously noted, on April 5, the materials were sent to the appellant, and then again, the appellant was advised verbally on May 12 and by letter on June 3 of the planned June 27 appeal hearing. And the appellant was advised that any additional reasons for the appeal must be submitted by June 16 to be included in the Planning Commission's packet. And at this point, no additional basis for appeal has been submitted. Following up on the grounds of the appeal, in the appeal application, first grounds was that the new plans will significantly alter the dynamics of the community. In staff's response, the new plan is in compliance with the Precious Plan of Design guidelines and standards identified in Resolution 2006-108. This resolution and the design standards and guidelines look at new unit designs for comparison to existing neighborhoods for mass, bulk, height of the units, the colors, materials, and even ridge lines and roofline compatibility. The idea is that the unit itself would be compatible with the existing neighborhood. Also, the plan is in compliance with a specific Plan 9, which is the Dos Vientos Ranch, specific plan, and then also the Dos Vientos Development Agreement and conditions of approval for Track 5200, RPD 2001-528, and RPMN 2007-70089. In reviewing the design, staff also found that the unit sizes in the Sedona neighborhood, or the range of the unit sizes are compatible, are also compatible with other gated neighborhoods in the Dos Vientos Ranch area, particularly in the southwest portion of the ranch. This exhibit here shows the surrounding larger lot tracks in the Dos Vientos area. The Warbington project to the north of the subject property, the unit sizes range from 3,435 square feet to 4,289 square feet. The subject parcel itself, illustrated and read here on this exhibit, Track 5200. With the new model, the unit sizes would range from 3,888 square feet to 5,344 square feet. The Hacienda development to the south, on the west side of Rancho Dos Vientos Drive, the house sizes range from 4,325 square feet to 4,844 square feet. And then the Brookfield development directly across from the Hacienda's range from 3,438 square feet to 4,664 square feet. So, in comparison to the sizes of the units in these gated areas, staff found that the unit sizes are compatible. Also, in looking at the architectural components of the designs, we have a series of elevation drawings that are being proposed. This is the Plan 4, single-story elevation and the Tuscan elevation. This is with a three-car garage. The unit also comes with an option of four-car garage, which we have here. Materials, again, are similar to the, are the same that are being used on the Tuscan designs on the other units already approved for the tract, the stonework and the stucco and the roof materials, exposed beamwork. So, this is the Tuscan elevation with the fourth-car garage. Then we also have the Spanish elevation with the three-car garage, followed by the fourth-car garage option for the Spanish also. This is a photograph of the Plan 1 Tuscan that's currently developed in the Sedona tract. See the stonework? They also have a Plan 1X Tuscan. The difference between the Plan 1 and the Plan 1X is pretty obvious. The larger bonus room, recreation room, that's above the entrance into the courtyard area. It's kind of a quasi-second story in there, but it is a larger unit than the other single-story in the plan. Then we have the Plan 2 Italian Eight design, and a Plan 3 Spanish. These are the modeled units that are available at the development. Then we have a street scene here. This is on the southwest corner of Villa Bonita and Villa Sedona. Left to right, we have a Plan 2, two-story Tuscan, and then the middle is a Plan 3, two-story Spanish design. And then on the corner again is the Plan 1, single-story Tuscan design. This is a view from close to the intersection of Villa Sedona and Villa Arabella, looking north. The primary area that still is in proposed development of the Dos, or Track 5200 is kind of the southern portion of the tract area itself. These are developed pads for future development, and off in the distance, you can see the three models onto the right, and then to the left are some of the newer homes for the Sedona area. Second ground of appeal is that the new plan will reduce property values, as stated at the administrative hearing. In response, the city development codes and standards do not address the economic issue of impact on individual home values. This issue appears to be a matter of contract dispute between the These are the modeled units that are available at the development. Then we have a street scene here. This is on the southwest corner of Via Benita and Via Sedona. Left to right, we have a Plan Two, two-story Tuscan, and then the middle is a Plan Three, two-story Spanish design. And then on the corner again is the Plan One, single-story Tuscan design. This is a view from close to the intersection of Via Sedona and Via Arabella, looking north. The primary area that still is in proposed development of the Dos, or Track 5200 is kind of the southern portion of the tract area itself. These are developed pads for future development, and off in the distance, you can see the three models onto the right, and then to the left are some of the newer homes for the Sedona area. Second ground of appeal is that the new plan will reduce property values, as stated at the administrative hearing. In response, the city development codes and standards do not address the economic issue of impact on individual home values. This issue appears to be a matter of contract dispute between the appellant and the applicant, and the overall downturn trend of the housing market over the past few years, and not on development, or deviations from the municipal code or city development standards. Therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission deny the appeal of the RPD, and thereby upholding the decision of the Community Development Department and approve the applications and the additional single-story design. That concludes staff's presentation. Available for questions at this time.
Questions of staff? No questions of staff? Okay, we will go to the appellant, Alex Bacekian. Mr. Bacekian, you have 15 minutes. Please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Good evening. My name is Alex Bacekian. I live in Sedona, Newberry Park. First of all, I'd like to postpone this hearing. I'm not ready. If you guys can do that, I would really appreciate it. I need more time, at least 30 days.
Mr. Town or Mr. Norman?
Well, then, what you have before you is a request for a continuance. The commission will need to address that. As Mr. Shepherd just noted, the appellant has had over two months to review materials, which were provided on April 5th. Therefore, staff would recommend that we go ahead with the hearing, because it does appear that the appellant is at ample time to review the materials. And the applicant in this case is also entitled to a hearing, and they are here present tonight. Obviously, any decision of the planning commission is appealable to the city council. However, in staff's report, which was provided to Mr. Bacekian, we have outlined all the grounds for appeal that were initially filed, and staff's response to those grounds of appeal, and feel that there's adequate information in front of the commission, in front of the appellant, to consider this. But ultimately, it, of course, is up to the planning commission.
If I could just add something. Historically, it's been the applicant that drives whether or not there's a continuance. And so this is an unusual situation where the appellant is not the applicant. So I would, if you're interested in exploring this, I would probably want to, I would recommend that you hear from the applicant.
Pleasure of the commission. Applicant? Okay. We will go ahead and go to the applicant, Dennis Rosari. Mr. Rosari, please state your name, city of residence for the record.
Chairman Fisher, members of the commission. My name is Dennis Rosari. I'm vice president of construction for Davidon Homes, Walnut Creek, California. We're strongly opposed to any additional time on this. It's dragged out long enough, and I think it's solely the intent of the appellant to delay this as long as he possibly can. By point of reference, staff had indicated to us that everything would need to be in, to be into your packages by June 16th, if I'm not mistaken. On June 14th, we received from the appellant a letter of 50-plus items of service requests on his house. If this item is so critical to his existence, I suspect that he would have had the time to address this, as well as he would address the concerns on his house. So I, again, request that you not continue this, but take it this evening and make a decision to allow us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Back to commission members. Can we have a motion on whether or not to continue, or Commissioner Reynolds?
I would like to move that we go forward with the hearing tonight.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Price?
Would it be appropriate to ask the reason for this continuance? I'd like to hear from the appellant.
I have an attorney who's working on this, and the reason I have an attorney, because I was lied to from day one when I moved into this community. And when I purchased a house, and I asked them about the modifications, if you're going to do any changes or not, and they said no. And then I asked for written paperwork, that they're saying, "We're not going to change." And then they did, obviously. And that's going to affect the value. It's all about the value, you know? I work hard for my money, and, you know, I just can't see this happen within a year. I just don't want this to happen. It's going to, 3,800 square feet homes in Newberry Park in Dos Vientos Ranch, it sells for 900,000. So that's what's going to happen. If they can guarantee me a price, and I even ask them how much for the price, you know, if you guys are going to sell those homes, guarantee me a price, then I'll find.
Okay, notwithstanding the potential litigation that you might have against the builder, is there any other reason that this hearing should be delayed? Is there another grounds for appeal that you see coming?
I can't say that my attorney is working on it.
Maybe your attorney is not here tonight?
No, not here. He's really busy. He works here in New York, so he's really busy, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, a commission comment to Commissioner Reynolds' motion to move on with the hearing.
Just a question. I know there's a motion on the floor, but do we need a motion on something like this if it's already calendared?
Yeah, in this case, because it's the appellant requesting the continuance, and it's the appellant's appeal, it's appropriate to move on the continuance item first.
Okay. Okay, vote, please.
We're voting to continue with this hearing tonight. Not to continue it, but to keep going.
So a yes vote would mean we continue.
Not to continue the hearing, but to continue with the hearing?
Continue with the hearing, thank you.
Motion passed 5 to 0.
Okay, Mr. Bacekian, we're back up to you. You have 15 minutes.
Well, I'm not going to say much, obviously, because I'm not ready. I'm not 100% ready, so I don't want to say too much. But the only thing I can say, the reason I am here, is because of the value. Before I came to Davidon, I had a deposit to buy a similar house in Porter Ranch in the Renaissance Card Gated community. So I paid 60,000, I mean, yeah, 60,000 deposit, and then the salespeople, they told me, "We may have some modification here. We may have to put some small homes here, build some small homes here." And if this, she said, "If it happens, then the house that you're buying right now, which was 1.4 million, it's going to drop the value, and we'd like you to know upfront, so you can make a decision." And then they said, "We're not sure yet. As soon as it happens, we will call you and let you know." And two weeks later, it did happen. And they called me, they said, "We're going to build smaller homes here, and definitely the value of this home is going to drop." So I was buying a house that was 5,200 square foot home, for 1.4, and they start building smaller ones, 3,800 square foot home. They start selling those for 950, and the house that I was going to buy, they priced it at 1.19. At that time, it was priced for 1.4. So same thing is going to happen here. And especially when I asked the salespeople, Davidon's salespeople, that, you know, "You're not going to do any modifications," because that's where I was coming from already. And they said, "No." They lied to me. And when I moved in July 1st, they already knew. They should have told me at that time, I would never move to that neighborhood. So, and that's basically what it is. It's about the value of the home, and I'm really upset about this.
Questions of the appellant? Thank you, sir. We'll be back to you momentarily. We'll go back to the applicant, Mr. Rosari, for any follow-up comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, there's a number of comments, and I'll try to make this brief. First, I apologize for the volume of material that we did submit to you on this. Know that your time is valuable, and that you probably didn't enjoy wading through our contractual obligations and language. But we make a very definite point, strong point, to make proper disclosure to all of our buyers, is this state is way too litigious to ignore those responsibilities. Our contract, our purchase contract specifically excludes verbal commitments, obligations. I personally have discussed Mr. Bacekian's comments regarding our sales agents, with both of our sales agents, who both deny making those statements. But regardless, the contract is very specific to ignore verbal. Let me back up for a minute, because with all due respect, this is really an item that is not a planning commission-type item. It is a contractual dispute, from the sounds of it, to the best of my determination. We comply with the city's ordinances and requirements with the setbacks, the height requirements, restrictions, the lot coverage percentages, the amenities of the house, the color blending in. I apologize that the pictures that staff had of our line drawings were so weak in comparison to the quality of the homes that are actually out there. If you've had the opportunity to visit our subdivision, I think it is a very high-quality, high-end subdivision. With that, our, going back to our contractual language, there is also very strong statements in our general disclosure information, our contracts, our brochures, and our sales price release sheets that say and indicate that Davidon has every right to make modifications to the houses, the size of the houses, anything and everything other than what the buyer is under contract to purchase. There were no changes made to his particular lot. This change did impact, or this new plan, did impact a neighbor of his, who happens to be here this evening as well, who signed a disclosure statement very similar to the statements that the appellant signed, and that was regarding that there would be a single-story plan for 3,888 square foot plan built behind the house they were buying. Unfortunately, they closed escrow on the day of the administrative hearing, on February 10th. The appeal happened roughly within the 10-day period following that, and we had to send them a notice that unfortunately, due to construction progress, we needed to move forward, and we had to revert back to building a two-story house behind them. Obviously, they were not happy with the fact that they bought a lot, that they intended to have privacy by having a single-story at a lower pad elevation being built behind their home, which is a two-story home. They're now faced with a two-story backing to a two-story, unfortunately. I have met with them regarding that as well. I met with the appellant prior to the hearing back in February. He voiced his concern at that point in time regarding the square foot values of the house. In the letter that I did submit, that it was in your staff reports, I tried to point out, possibly poorly, but I did try to point out, that in real estate, with any appraisal, real estate value, it's always based on a square foot value. If you go for a loan, the lender's going to look to the appraiser as to what it, how it compares with the neighboring properties. In doing that, they look at the amenities of that property, the lot size, the house size, the square footage, what's in it, what the neighboring properties have, or what they're comparing to. Swimming pools, granite countertops, et cetera. Due to the economic situations in the real estate market today, we end up specking a lot of our houses to a certain point of completion. We try to allow our buyers to come in and make those selections, but if they aren't online at a certain point, rather than having a house stop at a drywall stage, we spec the cabinets, we spec the electrical, and we move forward. That can continue all the way through the flooring options, and you can go in and be given keys the day after you purchase the house, if you can get financing, obviously, and have a brand-new home specked out by us. We keep a very high quality as to what we spec in those houses. We value our neighbors, neighborhoods, and we value what we put into them. We do not put standards into our houses. We upgrade tremendously. We have a lot of flex options in our houses. They can flex up to over 1,000 square feet, larger than the initial square footage of the house. In doing all of that, one needs to look at the total square footage of their house in establishing the value per square foot. Alex's house has had a five-car garage. That five-car garage flexes out to a fifth bedroom and a fifth-bedroom suite, so it has a bath, a full bath, and a full bedroom. It's roughly 900 square feet more to the house. In doing that comparison, that square footage, as well as the value of that square footage, needs to be added on to the house, not just the cost, but the square footage as well in order to come up with that value. I can't share with you this evening, because I really don't want to do it over a public system, but I have taken the time to go back and look at seven of the 19 homes that have closed escrow, including the appellant's. And I have evaluated those based on the purchase price, the upgrades that the homeowner put into them, the upgrades that Davidon put into them, and looked at those on a square-foot value. And while there is a variation, that they aren't all within a $10 range of each other, they are all within approximately a $40 range per square foot, when you look at the total square footage of the house. To say that there is a diminution in value because we're introducing a smaller plan, I think is incorrect. In today's society, as we all continue to age and get a little bit older, and demographics have indicated that we're all doing that, and the baby boomers are becoming the older generation, many of us are desiring and looking for a single-story plan. There's great benefits to that, obviously, not having to deal with stairs. The addition of this 3,888 square foot plan is a single-story. It replaces six single-stories. Due to the conditions of the subdivision and of the Dos Vientos Ranch, corner lots were required to be single-story, and a number of the lots backing up to Dos Vientos Drive were required to have single-story elements on them as well. What we have done by introducing this new plan is added more flexibility, more variety to our streetscape, so that we have a broader appearance to the subdivision. We are replacing four two-story plans. That's not a huge impact. When this started back in February, there were 13 plans to be introduced of the Plan Four, the 3,888. That's been reduced down to 10 as a result of the delay in getting here. I urge you, encourage you, ask of you, to please deny this appeal and allow us to move forward for the sake of the other buyers within the community that are in favor of this. You do have letters in your packages from, I think, five of our homeowners supporting this. I do know, from speaking to one of our homeowners last week, who happened to be one of the three that protested it at the administrative level, that she indicated to me, she was surprised that this is still ongoing, and I'll wrap this up very quickly, I apologize. She indicated that, she was surprised that this is still ongoing. She was led to believe that this was a 3,200 square foot plan and had problems with the size difference from a 32 to over 4,000 square foot for the next size plan. When she realized at the administrative hearing that it was a 3,888 square foot, almost a 4,000, in fact, this plan does flex up over 4,000 square feet, she didn't feel the need to be there. She indicated to me, and again, this is hearsay, but she did indicate to me, that they were supporting one of their neighbors, a friend, in their appeal to this. That gentleman is no longer associated with this appeal. This was with the protest at the administrative level. So again, I would urge you to please deny this, allow us to move forward for the benefit of the community and those that would like to see it. And I do not think this is a loss in value to the community or to those that have bought already. Thank you. If you have to answer any questions.
Questions of the applicant? No questions? Thank you, sir. Okay, I have one public speaker card. Sakar, I can't read your last name, so you'll have to announce it when you come up to the podium. Please state your name and city of residence, and you have five minutes.
My name is Sakar Kanapuram. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, specifically Dos Vientos, for the past 10 years. The reason we live in Dos Vientos is, and we intend to stay in this community for as long as we can. I recently moved to Davidon Homes about, I think, as Dennis was mentioning, the intention of we having a single-story home.
Sir, can you pull the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
Okay, is that better? Sorry. So I closed on February 10th, and as Dennis was mentioning, we had a single-story level on, behind us. Right now, we do see a two-level home. The reason I am in favor of Davidon to have a mixture of single-storied homes is our views of Boni Mountain are completely blocked, or will be blocked, if you have all two-story buildings, and it will reduce the value of our house, too. I did talk to a few of my neighbors on the right, and they are in support of the single-level storied homes. I do have other single-level homes in Dos Vientos, and one in particular, the, you know, value of the house is based on the square footage, and I do see that the price of the square for single levels are much higher than the two-level homes. I'm in favor, because, you know, what I see is, the reason I moved in is because of the views, and... views, and if we have continuous row of two-story, and the views would be significantly affected, and the price of the house also will go down. And a combination of different-sized homes will benefit the community in general. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Questions to the speaker?
Thank you.
No? Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go back to the appellant? Oh, to staff? Let's go to, back to staff.
Just a matter of clarification, the speaker had mentioned about the, excuse me, a single-story that was proposed behind his unit, actually, a two-stores going up. It's discussed in the staff report that the phasing plan that you have as your exhibits has actually been modified since the appeal was filed. Through business decision, the applicant determined they needed to proceed with Phase Four of the construction. So they went back to actually the approved phasing or unit mix of the Phase Four development, which of course did not include any of the Plan Four units, as they have not been approved at this point. And that original phasing or unit mix at that point actually had a two-story there, so that's why they proceeded with the two-story construction. And then, again, just clarification as far as compliance with the prior approvals and studies that go with this project, and the Dos Vientos specific plan, the specific plan nine, and the development agreement, and the tract map 5,200 deals with primarily the densities of tract 5,200 area there. With this application, the applicant is not asking for additional units out there, just a change of unit mix, so there's no question as far as density considerations, so they are in compliance with those documents. And then, again, with the RPD regulations, the precise plan design review, staff's review of the design and the plotting has found that the setbacks are met, the usable yard areas are met, the designs meet compatibility requirements, use of same materials and so forth that were discussed in the staff report, and then also here tonight. And again, the other documents, the requirements of the code actually lists any minimum lot size, or, excuse me, any minimum unit size for development. There is a requirement for minimum lot size in the developments, but nowhere in our codes the city actually has a limitation as far as what the minimum unit size is. So again, from standpoint, from a planning standpoint, staff's position is that the appeal really is, seems to be more of a contract dispute as far as for a contract between the appellant and the applicant versus any planning issues. That concludes our comments.
Questions to staff? No? We'll go back to the appellant, Mr. Chicken. Do you have any final comments?
Two of my neighbors, also, they were told the same thing, like I was told, that we're not going to do any modifications. And I'm going to appeal this again. Today, if I lose, I'm telling everybody right now, and I'm going to come back with, there's seven other neighbors that are going to join me the next time that I come here. So we were told that they're not going to do any modifications, and they're doing it. So, and I'm not agree with that. That's all I can say.
Questions to the speaker? Nope? Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, open for commission discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Reynolds.
I was waiting to let somebody else. Commissioner Price, did you want to?
I will.
Okay.
Well, I'm certainly sympathetic to the appellant here in that he feels that he's not being treated fairly, I suppose. However, having reviewed all the material that was presented, I think that the builder, Davidon Homes, is well within their rights to do what it is they're doing. They've met the city's standards in every regard, and for that reason, I would have a difficult time finding in favor of the appellant.
Is that a motion?
No, it really wasn't a motion, I didn't know if there was any other discussion.
Commissioner Reynolds dodged it, so.
She dodged it?
I thought that he was indicating he wanted to do it.
No, I just, I didn't know if there was any additional discussion.
Well, there's, once a motion is made, we can continue discussion. So back to you, Commissioner Reynolds.
Okay, I'll move denial of the appeal of the RPMN 2010-70446 with the information that's in the packet. I wanted to say that I went out and visited this community, I was pleased that I could get in the gate, I guess they're open at 10 o'clock in the morning because I was worried that I hadn't contacted staff. I never vote on anything without looking at the project, and there are beautiful homes, I love the stonework that's on the homes, and very large, very large homes. And I think that it's well-planned with the single-story homes. I'm fortunate that I built a single-story 30-something, eight years ago, so I don't have to think about moving to a one-story as I age anyway. So that's my motion.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Ferris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be supportive of the motion denying the appeal. Unfortunately, if you end up looking at this, this is in fact a planning issue. They've brought forward a minor modification to their RPD permit, they've, it is consistent with the precise plan and design guidelines, it's consistent with the specific plan. The concern I would have is that if this is in fact an appeal, it goes to the city council, and that they will be dealing with exactly the same planning issues that we are dealing with tonight. So I would, city's going to get more money from an appeal on this, lawyers will get more money from doing this, but this doesn't look like it's really our dispute. And it's unfortunate, given the real estate economy of where things go, but for those reasons, I'll support the motion.
Any other comments to the motion? Commissioner Trappell.
Yeah, I'm going to support the motion as well, although I am sensitive to the appellant. And Commissioner Ferris and Commissioner Price both made the correct comments, this is more of a contractual issue, it's not really in the purview of the commission. The truth is, the risk is on the developers, they build homes, and if they build homes and they sit out there, that's the risk that the developer takes. And so I think this actually needs to go to a different process for the appellant to solve, and with that, I'll support the motion.
Any other comments? Final comments, Commissioner Reynolds?
Motion passed 5 to 0.
And there's a 10-day appeal period. Will the secretary please call case 6C?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6C regarding case Z 2008 70687, SUP 2011 70031, LD 2011 70032, OTP 2011 70033, and MCA 2010 70543. Applicant, Thousand Oaks Boulevard Storage Partners, request to consider mitigated negative declaration number 284, change zoning from C3 Community Shopping Center to C2 Highway and Arterial Business at the rear of the site, allow construction of an office and self-storage facility, including a caretaker residence, allow the division of one lot into two parcels of record, allow encroachment within the protected zone of three, excuse me, six oak trees, and to amend the municipal code for mini-storage facilities standards.
Mr. Alawame, your turn.
Thank you. Chair, members of the commission, I'd like to direct your attention to the monitor for staff's presentation. As mentioned, Thousand Oaks Boulevard Storage Partners filed several application requesting the construction of an office and self-storage facility with caretaker residence, and the city of Thousand Oaks initiated a municipal code amendment to amend the standards for self-storage within the municipal code. There are four applications filed by the applicant, zone change application to change the zone in the rear from C3 to C2, the special use permit, the request is to allow the construction of the facility, the land divisions to divide the existing site into two parcels, and oak tree permit applications to allow the encroachment within six offside oak trees. The municipal code amendment, again, is to amend the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code to modify the mini-storage or self-storage standards within the C2 zone. The commission's rules tonight, since the council authorized concurrent processing of the other entitlements along with the municipal code amendment and zone change, is to make recommendation to the city council on all applications. Here's an aerial photo of the site, again, it's located on the north side of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, approximately 150 feet east of Rancher Road. Here's a picture of the site, currently, right now, there's a used car dealership on the site. Most of the building were demolished except of one small building in connection with the used car lot operation. Background on this application, in 2005, the city council authorized concurrent processing of special use permit and oak tree permit along with a zone change that the applicant filed. In 2006, the planning commission made recommendation to city council to approve the application. However, in 2007, the city council denied the application. At that time, they felt there was a conflict with the project, with the vision statement that was submitted by Todd at that time for Thousand Oaks specific plan. Since then, in 2009, the city council received the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, and self-storage facilities is an allowed use within the plan with the filing for special use permit. And December of last year, the city council again authorized concurrent processing of the entitlement application along with the zone change and municipal code amendment that the applicant requested again. The zone change request, again, is to change the zoning in the real side of, the portion of the side from C3, which is Community Shopping Center, to C2, which is Highway and Arterial Business Zone. And that's, the majority of Thousand Oaks Boulevard is C2 zone, and that will be compatible with existing commercial properties. The storage facility itself, again, it's not a permitted use in the C3 zone because it's Community Shopping Center, but it is permitted in the C2 zone with a special use permit, and that's the reason for the application. The land use element of the general plan designate the site as commercial, and the zone change, again, if it's from commercial to commercial, would comply with the general plan designation. Again, the zone change to C2, as I mentioned, is compatible with adjacent properties along the boulevard. C3 is a Community Shopping Center, which requires a minimum 10-acre site for development of a shopping center. The parcel is only 2.55 acres, which is well below the requirement of C3 zone. A special use permit is, again, request to construct an office building and self-storage facility with caretaker residence. The proposed project, staff believes it's an appropriate use for the site because of the configuration of the lot, which is narrow and deep, and because of the agress and agress to the site and the location near the intersection. Additionally, staff believes that the traffic, the project will be low traffic generator because of the use itself, and would not add any traffic impact to that intersection because of the use itself. The project complies with the city's architecture design guidelines and landscaping standards. Here's a rendering of the project showing the office building in the left is a single-story, and it shows many mansion on it, that will be built for many mansion. And on the right-hand side is the two-story storage office building on the first floor and the caretaker residence on the second floor. And beyond that is the storage buildings that you see in the middle there. And here's again, another picture, a rendering of the project along Tio Boulevard. There's a site plan, I don't know if you see it clear or not, there's two sections. Here's the front portion, closer to Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and you can see the two buildings in the front, the office building and the storage office building, caretaker residence, closer to Tio Boulevard, and the storage buildings will be behind those two office buildings in the front. And here's the remaining of the project in the rear with two other storage buildings. The project itself complies with the development standards in the C2 zone except for two waivers that the applicant is requesting. One of them is to allow steeper driveways on both sides of Building B. The code allows a maximum 10% for driveway slope. The request is to allow 12.1 and 12.25% slope. And the second request is to eliminate the requirement for loading and unloading zone. The code currently, based on the square footage, require two loading zones. Staff supports the waiver of 7% because, again, the access to those units in Building B will be from the driveways, would not be from the driveways, I'm sorry. So the steeper driveway would not have units, unit doors facing those steeper driveway, would be in the flat portion of the driveway. And again, since the use is low-traffic generator, there's no impact on circulation on the steeper driveway. There will be no parking spaces along those steeper driveways, and will reduce the grading on the site and also retaining laws requirement. Building B where these driveways are steeper is first floor almost completely tucked in or built in in a slope, so it will be underground, and the second floor will be above ground, but the majority of the first floor will be underground because of the need for less grading. Otherwise, there will be a lot of grading to open up Building B on all sides. Staff, again, supports the loading and unloading zones because, again, the nature of the use of storage facility, if customer want to use the unit, they're going to go park right in front of the door, rather than find a loading zone and park there and go back and forth for the units that have exterior doors. For units that have interior doors, they're going to park where the spaces are, and they're going to access the main entrance to those units. So requiring loading zones and putting them in a place that's not going to be accessible, it's not feasible for this kind of operation. And again, in the past, the city waived the requirement for loading zone for similar storage projects. The land division, again, is to divide the site into two lots. One will be for the office building, and the remaining will be for the storage building and the, for the office storage building and the storage units themselves. The existing parcel currently is legal non-conforming because of the depth of the lot. In the C2 zone, it requires that the depth, the depth of the lot cannot exceed three times the width of the lot. The existing lot right now exceeds those requirements, it's deeper than what the code allows, so it's legal non-conforming. The smaller lot that will be divided complies with the width and the depth of the C2 standards. However, the larger lot will only comply with the width, the depth will remain the same. The width will be reduced because of the land division. Again, in staff's opinion, since the lot is already non-conforming, we believe that the request for a subdivision would not create additional impacts to the site because of the nature of the use. The oak tree permit is to allow the encroachment for grading, landscaping, and path travel to the project under the protected zone of six offside oak trees, and we, staff believes that that would not be detrimental to the health of those trees. The municipal code amendment, again, the current C2 standards requires that self-storage facility be an accessory or incidental to an established retail business, and the storage building be removed from the street frontage and placed behind the retail. Those standards were adopted in 1980 to accommodate an existing business along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, right now, Kinko, FedEx Kinko Project, to accommodate the storage behind it, and that's why the code says had to be, the use has to be incidental to an established retail business. However, at this time, that standard is not applicable, there's not a lot of parcels that have established retail business in the front that could accommodate self-storage in the back. So staff believes that the code standard needs to be modified to be more applicable. So staff believes that the code standard needs to be modified to be more applicable. So with that, we're recommending that, that either the retail or office portion of the site to be a component of the project rather than accessory to, rather than the storage use, accessory to retail, but to be component of the project, and that retail or office to be in front, along the frontage of this Boulevard to screen the storage buildings in the back, and to allow that, any lots created prior to July 1st, 2011, that the depth to be greater than four times the street frontage. And the reason for that is again, there's not that many lots within the C2 zone that will allow stuff storage facility based on these standards. There's only three or four lots, however, there's, has two zoning designation on mostly C2 and M2. So in order for them to do that, they have to go through the process again of zone change, but there's not that many lots along T.O. Boulevard that will fit within the criteria and that will limit future self-storage facilities within the C2 zone. MND number 284 analyzed the potential impacts, and there's mitigation measures within the MND, and applicant agreed to all the mitigation measures. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the application to the city council. With that, staff concludes presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Trappell.
I'm not sure whether this is the time or we have to hear the other presentation, but we just finished a joint session on the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. If staff could, or if you could explain to me, how does that all fit together? I mean, does this, we haven't passed anything, and we haven't approved anything, so how does, how do we look at this particular project in comparison to that specific plan?
The draft specific plans lists self-storage facility as a permitted use that requires special use permit, and it requires it to be, requires that the frontage of the project with the self-storage facility to have retail and or office facing Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So they basically use the same standards currently in the C2 zone. However, they require that the storage buildings to be behind or away from T.O. Boulevard frontage, and that's what this project shows, that the storage buildings are not facing Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So it meets the intent of the draft specific plan.
Additional questions? Commissioner Ferris.
Thank you. I did, I just want to get some confirmations on the oak tree encroachments. I guess there's six oak trees that are going to be, are planning to be encroached on, three are on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and three are off-site, which is just to the adjacent property.
On the east side, correct.
Obviously, six, seven, and eight, which I guess are on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I mean, you need to encroach upon the protected area to basically.
For landscaping.
For landscaping.
And the path travel from the street.
Yeah. Three and four, which are off-sites, I saw some plans that kind of give a little silhouette of the oak tree that looks like it's right on top of the single-story building, but the oak tree permit states that they are going to be outside of the, or the drip line won't be.
Yes, the building itself will be outside, it's just excavation or the grading of the building will be within the protected zone.
Okay, so there will not be, I mean, there won't be any trimming of these trees to make room for the building, they are in fact separated away from what the plans are.
Correct, no pruning required, and the condition states that no pruning, no pruning is allowed.
And obviously, we go through the standard process of protecting the tree as we go through the excavation.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. I can see where the three-story building and the two-story building are starting at the same 790. And you said the second-story building is going to be built into the hill, so therefore the roof of the second-story building is not going to be lined up the same as the third story?
Correct.
Okay, and that's because they're building it to the hill?
Yeah, the beginning, the three-story, and then right behind it will be the beginning of the second-story building. They'll be at the same elevation because of the parking lot between them, and then the two-story storage building will be built into the hill, so it's not going to go up, it's going to go straight into the hill.
Is that why they put the second-story building towards the back so that it could be built into the hill? I just didn't understand why the three-story building wasn't at the back of the property where there's that hill.
Correct, the three-story was in the flat portion of the site, so it's easier to build up. The second story, because of the driveway access that they need on both sides to get access to the back, it's narrow and long, and that's why it's easier to put that into the hill rather than three-story building.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we'll go to the applicant, Mr. Mark Sellers. I also have a card as applicant for Mike Mirz. Mr. Sellers?
Good evening, I'm Mark Sellers, Jackson and Marco Law Firm, on behalf of the applicant. I think this is one of more unique projects I've ever been involved with. Before I get to that unique aspect, first I want to add a little more background. What you see before you tonight, this project has been essentially designed by staff about every building element, architectural feature we put on this building as a result of city staff suggesting it, and we agreed to it and added to the project. As staff indicated, when this was before the city council, they were hesitant to approve it, even though the planning commission prior had approved the project. That hesitancy was because of the specific plan, and I'd like to say that I'm a member of TOBA. TOBA has written that specific plan, and this project complies with that specific plan because the essential goal in the specific plan was to take the first 100 feet of frontage along the Boulevard and put a building there and not put parking there. The idea was to get parking behind the buildings and not have the more traditional Thousand Oaks development of sidewalk, landscape, a sea of asphalt, and then the building. For retail uses, that generally doesn't work along the Boulevard. What works is getting the buildings closer to the pedestrian sidewalk. It creates a more pedestrian-friendly atmosphere than parking in front of buildings, and this project does that because the parking's behind the two attractive frontage buildings, the office building and the office for, Many Mansions and the office for the rental facility. We refiled the application when we went back to the city council. The owner wanted to come back with a project that was a little bit different, and this is the unique aspect of it. He looked at that retail building and said, "I'm not in the business of leasing retail space. I'm not good at it, I'm good at the storage business, that's something that's somewhat of a risk to me." Also looked at the retail building, and if you have been to the site, there are two very prominent pine trees along the Boulevard. Retail and trees don't work well together. Retail businesses like people to see them. They like people to see their signs. They don't like trees in front of their stores and in front of their signs. So from a retail point of use, keeping those trees did not make a lot of sense. But from an office point of view, keeping those trees makes a lot of sense. The trees add beauty to that office building and something that doesn't impact that particular use. We went back to the city council with a proposal that Many Mansions actually be the ultimate owner of that retail, or that office building. We worked out a letter of intent with Many Mansions, and this applicant, sometimes I think he might be a little crazy, but he has offered to dedicate that office building and the land without, at out cost, to build it for Many Mansions and basically dedicate that as a gift to Many Mansions organization. That's something when we were at the city council was quite amazing, and I think one council member even joked, said, "You've established a rather high standard now for any development on the Boulevard." But that's basically the background. We presented at the time a land use study to the city council, and the reason for that was we wanted to assure the council, the city, and staff that you had two options. You basically could keep the used car lot that's there, which I don't think is a very attractive nor beneficial use, or you could go with the storage facility with utilizing the frontage of the property with this office building and the retail facility for the storage operation. Those were basically the two options. Why? Because you have a very narrow street frontage, and you have a lot that's 750 feet deep. You have a right-in, right-out. There's a very difficult intersection to get in-and-out access with left turn, so it's only right-in, right-out. Right-in, right-out is not good for office use. We're taught, we have staff mentioned tonight, this is probably one of your lowest traffic generating uses you'll find. The retail aspects, retail likes a broad exposure on the Boulevard. With the narrow exposure, it's not a good retail site. And then retail buried in the back of the property would die. It's never been successful in this community. I remember with the North Oaks Mall, we tried to do that, we had to tear the whole building down after a few years and redo it again. So with that, unless there's any questions, we find the conditions, we're agreeable to the conditions as proposed. There's been no opposition to this project. We even got a letter from the homeowner association behind that support this project, and one of the reasons is because that building is a lower profile and doesn't intrude and affect any light or visual impact on those residential projects to the, behind this particular lot. With that, I'd like, unless there are any questions, I'd like to turn over to Mr. Mirz, who is the architect.
Questions for Mr. Sellers? Commissioner Reynolds?
Mr. Sellers, I just wanted to thank you for talking about the pine tree because I remember that we removed it with the first approval, and I wasn't under the impression, I didn't realize that retail, it's good to have it removed, for office building, it's good to stay.
If you had talked to most of the merchants in this, on the Boulevard, they'd say, "We'd get rid of all the street trees, that'd be their preference." But those are two magnificent pine trees, and I think it's nice that they're staying.
Well, that's why I was so surprised when you were not asking for its removal, so I'm glad that you explained that. Thank you.
Other questions of Mr. Sellers? Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Mr. Mirz?
Hi, I'm Mike Mirz with David Hibbert Architects in Santa Monica. I just wanted to do a quick overview of the sort of design and character of the project. It's been described in the staff report, and as Mark mentioned, we've worked very closely with staff during the development of the project in terms of massing, building design, articulation, and the placement of buildings on the site. It was a goal to screen the storage use in the back by the two buildings in the front, and they have articulated sort of tower elements on them to sort of accentuate their height and create buildings that have interest as opposed to being little boxes on the street. So they have a fairly high level of detail, plaster finish, limestone panel accents at the corner, columns on the tower elements, and limestone wainscot below windows, molding accents, concrete tile roof, decorative awnings. Building A, which is the three-story building immediately behind the front two, first of all, is about 150 to 170 feet back from the curb line, so just to give you a perspective of its distance away from the street. Similar level of design and articulation, same materials, limestone accent, concrete tile roof, moldings, cornice, treated essentially identically as the front two buildings. And also, there's a tree planting in front of that building to sort of soften it as you enter the site from Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Briefly, on the west side of the project, as you're approaching from the Rancho roadside, the project is pretty heavily screened by the gas station that exists on the corner, and you've probably seen that in the design package. Also, the two existing two-story office buildings along that parallel Rancho Road screen a significant amount of the two-story building that is deep into the site. There's a gap between those two buildings facing Rancho Road. We're proposing to plant that with some tall screening tree, pine, redwood, something that the landscape architect would select. And so, the goal with the project was to develop a sort of an office park character with this, with these buildings in the front, all with a similar kind of a style and character, and I think we've accomplished that. Thanks.
Questions of the speaker? Nope, thank you, sir. Okay, I've got two public speaker cards. First one, Rick Schroeder. Mr. Schroeder, you have five minutes. Please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, members of city staff, my name is Rick Schroeder. I am the president of Many Mansions. Many Mansions is located here in Thousand Oaks. My city of residence is Oak Park. We do support the project, natural enough. As indicated by Mr. Sellers, part of the proposal is to donate the office building to Many Mansions, and I wanted to appear here tonight to tell you really what a tremendous benefit this will be, not only to Many Mansions, but also to the community and our residents as a whole. Because this donation will not only allow Many Mansions to provide additional service programs to its current and future residents, but it also represent, and also allow us to better serve the Thousand Oaks community. The donated office building will result in a savings in not having to pay office rent of almost $100,000 a year to Many Mansions, and that can be used for future and current services. You might have seen in the newspaper today, an announcement that Many Mansions received $11.4 million in federal tax credits with respect to our Hillcrest project. I'm happy to report that that represents the last bit of financing we have for this planned 60-unit affordable housing project, which actually became, came before this planning commission on May 11th of 2009. It's been a long time coming. But the Hillcrest project is 60 units for extremely low-income families, half of which will be homeless families. And as part of that, Many Mansions provides more than housing. We want to provide services, especially for those most in need, and those service programs that we intend at Hillcrest will be job development, counseling, financial planning, to get those homeless families and children back on their feet. But in this difficult economic environment, it's difficult to fund service programs. CDBG funds have been cut, grants have been reduced, donations have been reduced. So this particular savings program, this particular savings for this donated office building will allow us to use that to fund the Silver's program at Hillcrest and also provide additional savings to enhance our other programs such as our after-school homework tutoring program, our summer camp program, and others programs that we have here in Thousand Oaks. But being on the Thousand Oaks Boulevard, I think will better serve the community as well. It increases our visibility. Surprisingly, many people in Thousand Oaks do not know about Many Mansions and the services that we provide, and yet, we will now have increased visibility. It'll be easier for the community to find us, to learn information about our housing, how to get on our waiting list, what housing opportunities are available. And we can also use the building to provide workshops and other training sessions that we would use to help educate the community, again, with respect to affordable housing and services that we provide. So we do support the proposal, and I want to thank the planning commission for all your past support, not just of the Hillcrest project, but really for all the projects and affordable housing in general. This is one of the most supportive communities that we work in, and I think we support the project, and this will go a long way toward our mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeder. Congratulations on your big windfall in getting office space. I think you hit the lottery this week, so.
Yes, we did. It's been a good week, thank you.
Questions of the speaker? Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Will you be the only tenant in this office building?
Yes, we'd be the only tenant.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, actually, as Mr. Sellers, we'll be the owner, and we will be the only one using it. Yes, we're not going to rent it, or lease it, or anything.
That's what I was curious about.
No, no. It doesn't quite, to be quite perfectly frank, it doesn't quite solve or satisfy all of our office needs, but we're also, will be using the office space at our S. Village complex, which is next door. One of the attractive features of this particular office building is its location, it is near two of our larger affordable housing projects, S. Village and Villa Garcia. Thank you so much.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Schroeder. And our last speaker, Mr. Mario Diaz. Okay, thank you, Mr. Diaz. Okay, we'll go back to staff.
Staff has no additional comments, thank you.
Go back to the applicant, Mr. Sellers. Any final comments?
No final comments. I just wanted to add that I didn't talk about the amendment, the code amendment, but I think the code amendment makes a lot of sense when you look at the basic purpose of having any use in front of a storage facility is to screen that storage facility, and this does it, and it doesn't. does it. And it doesn't care whether, shouldn't make a difference whether it's retail or office. So with that, those are our comments.
Questions of the speaker? No questions. We'll close the public hearing, open the, to commission comment and/or emotion. Commissioner Reynolds?
I had a question of staff. I was, I was just wondering about condition 171 and 172. Why are there CCNRs involved with the project? That's something usually you see on houses.
That's related to land division. There will be reciprocate access and parking between the two lots, so we need CCNRs to make sure that overall maintenance and parking access, it's all tied in together with the two parcels.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Reynolds? Last chance. Commissioner Ferris?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'll move that we recommend approval of, well, everything. It's, yeah, I got to read them all. So recommend approval for a zone change 2008-7687, special use permit 2011-70031, land division 2011-70032, oak tree permit 2011-70033, and municipal code amendment 2010-7543 with all of the attached findings and recommended conditions of approval. This is a very well-planned project. It's comprehensive. It certainly provides public benefits. We're keeping lots of nice, healthy trees along the streetscape. And it has been mentioned understandably about what retail would like and what office would like, and I'm glad that we're in a position, we can kind of keep these mature trees. And I do bring one, one part of note is that the oak tree permit, even though there are six trees that are being encroached in this, they're not going to be pruned for this process. And it does look like that of the trees analyzed, they are, their trunk diameters are four inches to 15 inches. So they're all protected under the current standards. But I kind of think this is an example in which the oak tree permit process works. I mean, we analyze them, we're going to protect them, and it will still provide a great project for the Boulevard. So hopefully, this could be thought of in light as we move forward on future Boulevard developments.
Comments to the motion? Are you sure? Okay. Commissioner Price?
Sorry. Well, I think I need to commend the council for having the wisdom to put this off, knowing that the Boulevard specific plan was being worked on, the result of which is an absolutely gorgeous proposal there that makes very good use of what is otherwise useless space. And I think that the added benefit of the donation of the office building to Many Mansions makes it just all that much better. And I feel like it's Christmas in June. So I would be in support of the motion.
Commissioner Trappell?
Well, I just wanted to say I'm going to approve the motion as well and congratulations to Many Mansions. I think it's going to be a great project on the Boulevard and I can't wait to see it start getting underway.
I'd like to go back to Commissioner Ferris. Apparently, we need to add in the MND.
Officially, let's add in approval of the MND to the motion that we're going to vote on.
And I too will support the motion. I think it's a great project and especially getting Many Mansions in there with some free office space is pretty incredible. So all in all, great project. Vote, please.
Motion passed 5 to 0.
Okay, we'll go to item 7, Community Development Department Reports and Referrals. Mr. Towne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to bring to the commission's attention that our next meeting on July 11th is canceled, so we will be adjourning to July 25th. And that evening, we have two cases scheduled as described in your packet. So that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Can I get a motion for the minutes of May 23rd, 2011? Commissioner? Move to approve?
Motion passed 4 to 0. Thank you. Chair Fisher abstained.
Okay, any AB 1234 reports? Nope. Commission comments? No commission comments. Okay, we will adjourn to 6:30 PM on July 25th, 2011.